This meeting is called to water. This is Tuesday, December 20th, meeting of the Shrewsbury Select Board. We'll get right into the meeting. Can I have a motion to approve the bills, payrolls, and warrants?
Move approval, second.
Motion is second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Next order is to review and act to approve the minutes of the December 6th and 13th meetings.
Move approval, second.
Motion is second. Any further comment? No. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so voted. Announcements? Are there any announcements this evening? No? Okay. Town manager's report.
I just wanted to take a minute and acknowledge the work of the Beale Building Committee. They held their final meeting last Tuesday. The building committee's been in place since 2015, I believe, and they've led the town skillfully through the successful development of the new elementary school at Lake Street. And that project came in well under budget, actually about $6 million in total, less than was originally anticipated. And that will obviously benefit the town by keeping the tax rate lower than we anticipated it to be the town meeting approved. And actually, the project has some funds that we borrowed that were unexpended even, which we'll be able to provide the use for of in a future project, which we can borrow. So I just want to acknowledge their work over the years and congratulate them on a successful project. The board will ultimately be requested to approve their minutes in the future so we can kind of close them out officially.
2015. I knew it was long. I didn't think it was that long. Okay, anything else?
That's it. Thank you.
Okay. The next item on the agenda is public comment. There's no public comment this evening because nobody requested to be on the agenda. Okay, next item of business is a meeting with Richard Ricker regarding an extension request for storage parking at 824/826 Hartford Turnpike by Mag Retail Holdings BMS LLC and Mag Retail Holdings AUS LLC. Mr. Ricker, good evening.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Again, nice to see you all. Thank you for having me tonight. This is a request by our local Audi dealer and BMW dealer, McGovern Auto Group, Mag Retail Holdings AUS LLC, DVA Audi, and DVA BMW, to do the same thing that the previous license holder of their licenses was doing at this location. You may recall that Wagner Motors owned these dealerships before McGovern, and they had requested this remote parking permit for their licenses. And this is exactly the same thing. We're just looking to do the same thing that Wagner was doing before. We didn't realize really that we had to come before you again. We thought that it traveled with the license. But in discussions with the town manager's office, we determined that it would be best to come and do it now because of the new licensee name. So we're asking to be allowed to continue that parking that was previously there. There is room. It is plenty. There's plenty of buffering from the neighboring property, and it's buffered in the rear by wetlands, so.
Yeah, there'd be no problems there.
No.
Okay, questions from members of the board?
And you can't see it from the street either. It's so far.
I bet it was there, to be honest with you.
Yeah.
Okay. And if there's no questions, did we have? We didn't have restrictions on the work hours, did we?
Nope. Nope. We asked for 100 to 150, and that was what you gave. And it alternates between the BMW and the Audi as to sometimes the Audi will have 100 and sometimes the BMW will have 100.
You can only fit so many in the lot.
Yeah. And frankly, we can't actually fit 150 there now. It's about 120 at this stage. They've moved some equipment around back there, and we're working it out basically with the other tenant there. So it's wall. Wall construction is there.
Yep, okay.
Longtime Shrewsbury guy, and he's kind of spread out a little bit.
Okay. Somebody like to make a motion?
Yes, I move that we approve the extension request for storage parking at 824/864 Hartford Turnpike by Mag Retail Holdings BMS LLC and Mag Retail Holdings AUS LLC.
Second.
Okay, we have motion second. Any further discussion? There being none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so voted.
Thank you very much. Nice to see you all. Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.
Thank you.
Happy holidays.
Next order of business is to review and act on the recreational marijuana courier operator host community agreement with Finest Trees LLC. Good evening, gentlemen.
Good evening.
How do you want to take us through this? Yep, I'm happy to do that. So, board members, you'll recall that this is a host community agreement for the request of a marijuana courier business to be located at 3436 Harrington Avenue. We have followed the standard process for these host community agreements. This is the sixth step in the process, which is the board's formal approval of the host community agreement, which you authorize negotiation of at your October 25th meeting. So we've presented to you a host community agreement that's reflective of the updates in the general laws and appropriate for this type of business, and recommending adoption of the agreement this evening. But I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Okay. So this is primarily an office, right?
Correct. It's essentially an administrative office. There won't be any cannabis products inside it at any time. It'll be a place where personnel files will be held and dispatch and, you know, GPS monitoring will happen for the vehicles as they're engaging in delivery transactions around the state. But it's just a small space for our sort of headquarters for the operations.
Is this your final approval now?
No, unfortunately. This will enable us to complete the provisional license application to the Cannabis Control Commission. And then once, you know, we have that, we can go through the local permitting through the town, and there'll be a series of inspections and things like that. But this will at least allow us to continue with the licensing process.
The traditional inspections, like I know it's being built right now. What other inspections do you need?
The Cannabis Control Commission has a series of inspections just to make sure that the facility is fully compliant with all the regulations. So there'll be an inspection after it's built out, and then there'll be, after a final license, there'll be another inspection of the vehicles and the facility.
There's still the special permit, too, from the town.
Oh, okay.
Right. There'll be the cannabis use permits from the, you know, the land use permits as well that we'll be applying for in the meantime as well. So ways to go, but this is a major hurdle for at least our state license process.
Okay. Any questions, members of the board? Okay. If there's not, is this a public hearing?
It is not.
Okay, sorry.
Just authorize the town manager to sign the agreement on behalf of the board.
Okay. So, you have a motion to authorize the manager to sign the agreement on behalf of the board?
Yeah, I move that we authorize the town manager to sign the agreement, host community agreement with the Finest Trees LLC on behalf of the select board.
Second.
Okay, we have motion second. Any further discussion? There being none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, so voted.
Thank you very much.
Well, I think you're done with us.
For now, and I'll work with the town manager for the certification form and all that later.
Yep, we'll get that off to you.
Okay. Thank you so much. We appreciate your time.
Okay, next order of business is to review and act on the 2023 license renewals to include the following license types: the in-house alcohol license, common victuals, Sunday and weekday entertainment licenses, automatic amusement licenses, auto dealer licenses, and seasonal dancing licenses. We have a list. Everything is listed out. We have one that is a contingent approval for Clinton Auto.
I can go through those if you'd like.
Sure.
There's a couple. So there's actually four contingent licenses within the alcohol area that require finalization of their certificate of inspection, which includes the Bollywood Grill, Buffalo Wild Wings, the Knights of Columbus, and Scandinavian Athletic Club. So those are contingent upon the issuance of inspection. This is unfortunately just part of the process and a shorter list than there was last year, but we anticipate compliance prior to the end of the calendar year. And then for Clinton Motor Cars LLC, it's contingent upon building inspector and fire department approval of their updated site plan, which we're working through with the business owner. So all other licenses as presented on the agenda are fully ready for the board's consideration.
Okay, questions?
So, yeah, I have one. So how do we go about making this motion? Do we approve with the contingency for those four businesses?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Yep, so it would be for the four alcohol-related licenses, it's contingent upon the issuance of the certificate of inspection. And for the Class II license, it's contingent upon building inspector and fire department approval of the updated site plan.
Any other questions? Okay. Would you like to make a motion?
Yep, so I move that we approve the 2023 license renewals to include the following types: alcohol, common victuals, entertainment, Sunday and weekday, automatic amusements, auto dealers, and seasonal dancing, with the contingencies as outlined for the four businesses by the town manager.
Okay. There was the four alcohol businesses and the car dealer.
Yeah.
Yeah, I missed.
Five total.
I know it's in here somewhere now. I can't find it. Contingent upon the, yeah.
So, motion to approve the 2023 license renewals as listed on the agenda with the licenses for Ramd Inc., Inc., doing businesses Bollywood Grill, Blaze and Wings, Inc., doing businesses Buffalo Wild Wings Grill and Bar, Adelphi, Inc., doing businesses Knights of Columbus, and Scandinavian Athletic Club, doing businesses Scandinavian Athletic Club, being contingent upon the issuance of a certificate of inspection, and Clinton Motor Cars LLC, doing businesses Clinton Motor Cars, contingent upon building inspector and fire department approval of updated site plan.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, we have motion second. Any further discussion? There being none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, so voted. Okay. The next item is to review and act on a one-day alcohol license application of Musa Shaman, St. Mary's Syrian Orthodox Church, One Industrial Drive, Shrewsbury, for the 25th wedding anniversary on Friday, December 23rd, 2022, from 7:00 PM to 12:00 AM.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have motion second. Any further discussion? There being none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, so voted. Next is to review and act on a one-day all-alcohol license application of Musa Shaman, St. Mary's Syrian Orthodox Church, One Industrial Drive, Shrewsbury, for New Year's Eve party on Saturday, December 31st, 2022, from 5:00 PM to Sunday, January 1st, at 2:00 AM.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, motion is second. Any further discussion? There being none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, so voted. Okay. Next order of business is to review and act to fund Phase Two of the American Rescue Plan Act Comprehensive Funding Plan. We've worked on this for a while, gone through process with the departments and ourselves, and had a forum last week. And we have before us the list of projects and funding schedule that we had worked on, and it's ready for approval. So I'll open up this for discussion if anybody has anything to say.
So I have one thing that I would love for the manager to kind of just speak to around the splash pad because we hear it so much. And I know that people came to the forum and wrote this down, but maybe didn't get a response because it wasn't an email to the board, per se. And if you could just spend a couple of minutes talking through the reasons you've told me why a splash pad, using this funds for a splash pad wouldn't be the way to go.
Yep. So I think the biggest challenge that we face is the long-term operating costs associated with a splash pad. None of the other projects, even from a capital improvement perspective that are being considered on this list, would require ongoing operating costs. Ongoing operating costs at a minimum for splash pad, even if it doesn't have to be staffed on a 24/7 basis, requires a very high consumption of water and the use of electricity. So that would definitely build ongoing costs in. And then depending on how the park is designed, there could be staffing that's required, although not all towns that have splash pads require that type of staffing. The smaller splash pad, the less likelihood that there would be staff. So it's really the concern of not building in any ongoing costs within the budget. That was something that we focused on for this plan, with the exception of some of the staffing, that we had very clear conversations about how we would supplant the ARPA dollars with ongoing revenues. And we modeled that into our operating budget to ensure that we were able to do that. So that's the primary reason. We certainly have heard it throughout the years about the town's interest in developing it, and it doesn't mean that anyone's necessarily opposed to it. I think we just have to plan for it in a different way.
Thank you.
Okay, anybody else?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Ms. Samia?
Sure. So, just on the forum, appreciate all the hard work that was done at the forum and those who participated from the community, as well as the feedback we received. It's important to denote, too, that as part of ARPA Phase Two Funding Plan ties back to all the hard work that's been done over the last year for the strategic plan, which has involved comments from hundreds of residents over the last year or so, from the community survey, through the drop-ins, through the various events throughout the community. And I think it does a really good job tying back in what was presented to us, as well as the strategic plan and the outcome areas that we're looking to address as part of it. So I think that it really connects well with what the feedback we've received from so many residents over the last year, and I'm comfortable voting on it this evening.
Okay. Anyone else?
Mr. Chairman, are we, can I ask the town manager, based on the feedback that we did receive, are we proposing any changes to what we initially proposed?
No changes to the funding plan that was set forth by the board. What I have seen in the comments is the opportunity to consider, for the board to consider dedicating some of the $370,000 that hasn't been allocated. So I think a couple of good ideas, several, all the ideas that came in are good. There's an opportunity to maybe fund a few of those. The other opportunity, or the other thought that I have is when to do that. So certainly it can be done sooner rather than later if there's an interest from the board. I think in about six months or so from now, we'll have a better understanding of the progress the departments have been made and the bids that were put out, and how these dollars lined up with those project estimates that department had submitted in September. So that could free up additional funds or could require a few more dollars. But I think in general it will require less funding than you've even set forth here on this plan. So again, to kind of summarize, I think people looked for more details on the projects, weren't opposed to anything that was presented and suggested opportunities for use of the remaining funds.
Was there anything, except for the splash pack, that was radically different? I didn't see anything, but was there anything that was radically different?
Not that stood out to me.
Yeah. Okay. Any other questions? Yes?
So I just, you know, we received, some of the feedback that we received, there was specifically one from Mr. Molina that had mentioned collaborating with the Community Preservation Committee as we nail, you know, finalize the details on the plans that we're doing. And is that, that is part of the plan as we move forward into like putting out requests for bids for these projects? Or is there, is there any like collaboration with, with that group and other, other funding sources as we move forward?
I would have to go back and look at his email. I think most of his comments with regards to that collaboration were in reference to the $1.5 million for land acquisitions, which I do think there's an incredible opportunity to partner with CPA on, and I would like to do that. I know that's the feeling of the board as well. But, you know, we did collaborate with the Parks and Cemetery Committee when coming up with the plan and carry and force some of the work that was done in 2018 on their Four Parks Master Plan. So we'll definitely continue our engagement with the requisite boards and committees and hopefully the CPA, CPC, if we find any land acquisition opportunities.
Him were limited than we were with the op, right?
How they can use their dollars.
How they can use their dollars.
Well, yeah, they have the four buckets, yeah, four buckets.
But actually, the parks, I was surprised, is some of the things that we weren't able to fund through the op, they've got in the queue for CPC, basketball courts at Dean Park and a couple of other things they did. So that's working, so that's good.
That's great.
Okay, is there anything else?
If I may, Mr. Chairman, I think I'll just echo what Mr. Samia said. I think that not only did we include a lot of the feedback that we've gotten through the community and from the residents, I mean, this all started with the department heads and town staff and the people that are running the town and are interacting with residents on a daily basis and getting their feedback on what the town needs, how we can mitigate tax increases or otherwise expenses to the community. And I think that what we will hear inevitably is that people didn't know. And we've tried really hard to be very transparent, to make all this information available, to let the community know what we've been doing. Part of the ARPA funding is to enhance our ability to communicate and engage. It is a shared responsibility. So I hope that people will continue to check in with us and everything that we try to make available, to see what's going on, to see what's of interest to them. But I agree. I think that there's a lot of hard work that's been done by a lot of people. I think we're always open to feedback, but I agree, I'm ready to vote to proceed with the plan.
Good. I think we tried really hard to focus on quality of life things as much as we could and stay away from operational issues as much as possible. And I do think, I agree with you, that we tried to tie into what we heard in the national poll and the strategic plan. In the years, we've heard primarily about the underinvestment in the parks and in recreation in general. And I think this is the one opportunity that we could do this. And I think we've done a good job at it, at least to put a bite into it that we've never been able to do in the past 20 years. So, but we did have to do some things that we had to do. This were, it wouldn't have been the first thing I would have wanted to do, but it needed to be done. So I think we, I think we tried to find the balance, and I was very happy that we were able to spend money on the social service aspect of it that we've struggled to be able to do over the years also. So I think we listened, and I hope people appreciate that we tried to listen to what, to what people were saying over the years and sent through those surveys. And I think we've done our best and we'll move forward. So.
Yeah, I would agree with that. I think also, you know, you talked about the sewer piece, but one of the criteria was to try to find ways to use this money to reduce burden, the burden on people and what they have to pay. And by addressing sewer needs with some of this funds, it's less that the rate increase would have to be made in order to have those repairs and upgrades taken care of. And that's part of, part of what it means to be a community is to take care of your infrastructure. And I agree with you. There was, there was no one at our forum last week that stood up and said, "You missed the mark." People were generally very supportive of the plan that we outlined. I think there's a lot of really great questions that came out of the forum from people, but questions around what was there, not something in a totally different direction. And I agree with you on the social service aspect of things, where by voting this evening, it means that that money becomes available immediately for the residents who need it for assistance with utility bills and tax relief and things of that nature that really can't wait.
Yep. And if any year was a year for that, this is the year.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
Okay. So if there's no other discussion, somebody like to make a motion?
I move that we approve the funding of Phase Two of the American Rescue Plan Act according to the plan.
Second.
Okay, you have a motion second. All of us in favor. Any further discussion? Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, so voted. Okay, on to correspondence. Item 12 is an email dated December 6 from Jamien Madar, Stony Brook Lane, regarding concerns of the Subaru dealership on South Street and Route 9, so noted. It was a hearing on that last night with the ZBA. Item 13 is an email dated December 6 from Jitin Jali Pathak, 21 Seaton Drive, regarding the Subaru dealership on South Street, so noted. Item 14 is an email dated December 8 from Deb Berkstrom and Jim Harold, 151 Hartford Turnpike, Lot 21, regarding criminal acts, so noted. Item 15 is an email dated December 6 from Jane Lazard, Assistant Superintendent for Community Partnerships and Well-Being, regarding Shrewsbury Public Schools, regarding Shrewsbury High School, American Government Students Seeking to Learn From You. Mr. Mizikai, did you participate in that already?
Yeah, Mr. Snowden and Ms. Loss and I went to the American Government class last week and gave a presentation, an overview on the budget. And now students, starting this afternoon, are engaging one-on-one with departments to learn about their individual funding needs. It's an interesting project, and we're always excited to participate.
Great. Thank you. Item 16 is a letter received December 8 from Janet Pearce, Executive Director of the Central Mass Regional Planning Commission, regarding the appointment of delegates and an alternate to the Central Mass Regional Planning Commission. Currently, the selectmen appoint one delegate and one alternate to the board. Currently Kathleen Kohane and Matthew Arment. Kathleen is the delegate. Matthew is the alternate. Have we heard back from them yet, you know?
I don't believe so.
Not yet. I don't know if anybody's interested. The commission meets quarterly. It's interesting. It's an interesting board. If somebody wants to do it, we'll wait and see if Kathleen and Matthew want to do it. And if you think you want to do it, we can decide at the next meeting. Planning Board has two, they have two delegates, too, that are on it also. Item 18 is an email dated December 9 from Yi Jing, 140 South Street, regarding the Subaru dealership, so noted. Item 19 is an email dated December 13 from Jason Molina, 31 Wachusett Ave, regarding ARPA funding feedback, regarding the land acquisitions and park improvements that we spoke of a little bit earlier, so noted. Item 20 is an email dated December 13 from John Zabelli, 38 Nolton Ave, regarding the American Rescue Plan Act funding, so noted. Item 21 is a letter received December 15 from Clean Harvest Environmental Services regarding permanent solution statement availability for diesel fuel release at the intersection of South Quinsig and May Street, so noted. Items 22, 23, and 24 is ZBA decisions dated December 28, 2022, for Michael and Amanda Pitalz for a special permit of 12 Deerfield Road, Anne Mormon for a special permit and variance for property located at 240 South Quinsig and Nav, and Mary J. Holland for a special permit for property located at 332 South Quinsig and Nav, so noted.
I think it's 17.
What?
17.
I missed 17?
Yeah.
Oh, because I checked it off before I read it. Okay, sorry about that. Item 17 is an email dated December 8 from Chief Jim Vona, Fire Chief, regarding December 8 from Chief Jim Vona, Fire Chief, regarding fiscal year FY '21 staffing for adequate fire and emergency response, otherwise known as the SAFA grant. We were notified that, once again, unfortunately, we did not qualify for the SAFA grant, and anticipating that in contingency, Mr. Mizikai had already anticipated that eventuality, and had built into the budget deciding to do, to mimic what a SAFA grant would do, to bring four firefighters onto the, onto the force. But, we also decided to use ARPA money to replace that, soften that, blow a little bit of bringing on those firefighters. So, fortunately, we have the money to do it. Unfortunately, we didn't get the grant again, so we'll be moving ahead with that. I don't know what we have to do to qualify for that, but not easy. So, anyways, thank you for pointing that out. So, now are we closing this meeting and then opening the other?
Yep.
Okay, so, if that's the end of business here, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have motion second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, so voted. This meeting is adjourned. Happy Hanukkah, Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, and we will see you next year.